Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, June 5, 2017. Since we don't have a secretary at this moment, I will take attendance. Anthony Amato. Valerie Anderson. Valerie will not be here tonight. She's ill. Alan Brown. Greg Cava. Michelle Gora. I'm here. Stephanie Colnick. Jennifer Poty. Lisa Rousch. Michael Sinatra. Julie Stewart. And Peter Tagley. All right, so Anthony Amato, Valerie Anderson, Alan Brown, Greg Cava, and Lisa Rousch are not present yet. Hopefully, some of them will show up. All right, item two, I'd like to welcome our newest Board of Education member, Julie Stewart from Bridgewater. Welcome, Julie. [applause] I look forward to serving with you. I know you have a lot of experience with the education system in Region 12, so I look forward to your input. All right. Item number three, recognition of Kelly White, Teacher of the Year, 2017-18. Dr. Costino?
Okay. I'm going to go over here. I'll use my phone. Good evening, everyone. Always love this evening. It's a night that really focuses on what we're about, teaching and learning. So our first honoree tonight is the Teacher of the Year. And the Teacher of the Year program has been going on in Connecticut for many, many years. Region 12 participated, and they stopped, and we brought it back last year because I think it's important that we recognize our teachers and our certified staff members. They do a fabulous job. We have some of the best teachers in the state, and I think it's important that they are recognized. So the way the process works, just so you know, is that we have a committee, and the committee sends out our application, and teachers are nominated by their peers, by their colleagues, which I think is also really very special. To be nominated, even if you don't win, by someone you work with is really -- it's an honor. So we send that out, the nominations come back in, we do a blind as best as we can, but it's hard. It's hard to do a blind, but we try to. And we haven't gotten many, many nominations, and because we're so small, it's easy to figure out who it is. So anyway, last year, we had Mary Ann Maugh. She represented us, and she did a great job, and her term has just ended. And July 1, our new Teacher of the Year will serve for a year and represent our region. And this was an overwhelming choice. Kelly White is a third-grade teacher at WPS. She is a master teacher. She is highly organized, dedicated to perfecting her craft, respectful to all children and parents, ready to commit to being a team player. She readily shares her expertise and resources, as well as her insights into best practices. Kelly, this year, served as an informal mentor to the five new teachers at WPS, which was really wonderful. Her ability to be a dedicated planner and implementation of the district's programs, vision and mission, is outstanding. Her classroom is always abuzz with student learning. She is just the "to-go" person among her peers, and she's just fabulous. She's just fabulous. Kelly has made WPS a better place as a professional classroom teacher, an informal instructional leader, and a teacher consistently striving to better her craft. She plays an integral role on the school's climate committee and as a CTT mentor, supporting and guiding the new teachers. She's always involved in community events. You'll see her at all of the WPS activities. And we really are very, very honored to have Kelly White represent Region 12 as our region's Teacher of the Year. Come on up. Congratulations. It's really exciting. And Kelly now participates in different activities through the school year with the state and works on best practices with other teachers across the state, so it really is a wonderful program. So I'm excited that you're going to be representing us. And just to remind everybody that we have a little refreshments afterwards, and Colin will be taking pictures, so please don't leave, and we'll get your family. I see her hubby's there, and her mom, and her son, so I'm glad you could all be here.
All right, moving on, item four is recognition of students.
Okay, here we go. I'll ask the principals to get up and get the award when I call their student, and this way, you can be in the picture also. Okay? This award, I always say, is the award that keeps on giving, because I presented so many times. I presented at the award ceremony, I presented at aloha's, I presented at graduations, I presented at award ceremonies, so -- but it's my honor, because these are wonderful, wonderful students. Our first student being recognized is Caitlin Smaraglio from Booth Free School. Is she here? No? Oh, okay, maybe she'll come in, so we'll do her in a little while.
I'm sorry, these are the superintendent student awards. Is that right?
Yes, they are. This is the Litchfield County Superintendent Association Leadership Awards, and they are given to students who are hardworking, represent their schools and their peers in a positive way, they are leaders, they go above and beyond, and they are chosen by their principals. And they were honored in the spring at whatever the cornucopia is now. I don't remember the name. And here they are again, and so we're thrilled that they could be here. So is Dylan Fiore here? Not yet. Okay, maybe they think it's seven. Okay. Claire Kirsten? Yeah, she's here. Claire is a fifth-grade student at WPS. She's a quiet leader who is great friend, excels in her academics, and always pushes herself to do her best. She's a member of the school chorus and also president of the student council. She is always trying to help improve the school. She participates on athletic teams outside of school and has two younger brothers. Every day, she strives to be an excellent role model. Congratulations. There we go. Great. Congratulations. Spencer Herron? No Spencer yet? Okay. We do send letters to invite everybody. It's a busy time of the year. Nadia Roz. I saw Nadia. Here we come. Come on up, Nadia. Nadia is an 11th grader at Chapag. We picked two students for Chapag, an 11th grader and a 12th grader. Nadia has impeccable character and impressive service that has truly set her apart from her junior peers. She is selfless in giving to those less fortunate and lives by a high moral compass. Nadia is kind and considerate to all people she encounters and is often seen interacting with students in need of someone to brighten their day. She has been extremely active at Chapag through soccer, tennis, swimming, dramatics, National Honor Society, and the Spartan Club. Nadia is a perfect role model, and we enjoy having her at Chapag. Love that smile. Congratulations. Fernando Pires. Not yet. Okay. Okay, I think there's something.
Next is the recognition of the top five academic seniors.
Okay, so you guys are doing that, and then I'll come back up.
I am honored to talk to you about these students, as they are all obviously very bright in the top five, but they're also very, very special students, and I've decided to fail them all in English and to keep them for another year. Oh, I didn't tell you that? Okay. I'm going to talk about Noelia, even though she's not here yet. Noelia Aguirre, she -- when looking at her recommendations, I saw phrases like "fastidious attention to detail," "precise focus in all areas of her life," "quiet and reserved," although I've seen a different side, maybe on senior weekend? I'm just saying. She had a good time, and she does. One of the things that strikes me about Noelia is her special friendship with Maddie, who I'll talk to you about and brag to you about later, and that's when she's not so quiet. She also chose for her senior project to write a book, With Eyes She Couldn't See, which is a compelling young adult novel, and she is hardworking, creative, and just a very special girl indeed. She will attend Bentley to study international business. Noelia. Next, excuse me, I'd like to introduce you to Maddie Gora. When looking -- oh, that's right, you can come up and listen to me talk about you. That's very nice. Thank you very much. Maddie is the other half of Noelia, and many, many other people. When one of her classmates recommended her for the Stephen Reich Award, one of the phrases that was used was that Maddie is one of the nicest people she's ever known, and she couldn't imagine her not being nice to someone. Have any of you gone to high school? That's a really big compliment. I like that a lot. What strikes -- what struck her teachers about Maddie in her recommendations are her strong community foundation, fostering unity within the school community, and wanting -- and having a flawless academic record, but also looking to seek out ways for service. Maddie's senior project was a fundraiser for St. Baldric's. It was one of the highest-earning fundraisers in senior project, certainly the highest this year, at more than $20,000 that was raised, and part of it was this snappy new short haircut. Maddie, in front of a whole school of people, shaved her head and created a really, truly magical event that kids jumped into and learned the meaning of passionate community service. Maddie will attend Franklin Marshall College, and her major is yet to be determined because she just likes so much stuff. Maddie Gora. Josh Jordan. When I think about Josh Jordan -- thank you, dear. Now, you know I've been a teacher a long time. I have homework for all of you. As you walk out of this school tonight, as you get to the front doors, before you go into that first little vestibule, I want you to look to the left. You will see a bench that you will think is, "This is amazing, this is so ornate, this is so beautiful. I can't imagine, you know, how -- where they got that." Josh made it, and he made the tools to make it, and he turned himself into a blacksmith. And that was like a part-time little hobby for him. He did all of that research. That was his senior project. It is truly a beautiful piece of work, and do your homework and look at it, please. When I look at Josh's recommendation, I think -- see things like academic rigor, finding the time to play sports and becoming captain of sports, serving as a class treasurer at times, debate team. Josh is part of the debate team. Like, you think of the debate team, you think of Josh, okay? And this is his strength, this is his passion, this is Josh Jordan, and he's done a marvelous job, and he's represented our school very well. Josh will attend Cooper Union to study engineering. Oh, is Mom done? Are you done?
Thank you.
Okay, great. This time, I'd like to introduce you to our salutatorian Bianca Getzel. Now, I also think of Bianca when I think of the debate team. Her talent is incredible there as well. But first and foremost, I think of international relations. I think of the World Affairs Forum, where Bianca led a team to debate with the former president of Columbia University, and I think he had a hard time keeping up with us. It was an incredible experience, and it was incredible because our students were so well-prepared, and they were well-prepared under the leadership of Bianca Getzel. That's a pretty big thing. Her passion for current events extends far beyond the walls of our school. She welcomes any opportunity to discuss world issues. She is a part of the debate team, the school newspaper, so on, and so on, and so on. Bianca has done an incredible job after coming to our country in the seventh grade and blooming and blossoming. I think my favorite Bianca Getzel quote was when she said, "I was afraid, when I came to this little school, that it would limit my opportunities, and yet, it gave me so much more." Thank you very much, Bianca. Bianca plans to attend the University of Manchester in England to study international relations, unless, of course, she decides to go to Wesleyan, where she was accepted just today. [applause] That's right. Good job. Thank you. And now, I would love to introduce you to our valedictorian, Marty Myers. Marty probably should have made me promise not to say that I was at his baby shower. Oh, he was the baby. I've known Marty for a long time, and I could not be more proud. I think I might even get a little choked up. I shouldn't have said the part about the shower. Okay. Marty Myers, when you look at his recommendation, you see phrases like "self-declared," "teacher-nominated," "self-declared and teacher-nominated voice of Chapag," and what a voice it is. His word of the day always fascinates me, and his -- he slips into somewhat of a British accent. It's in there somewhere. And it's really, it's really quite continental, suave, you know, kind of a, almost a Don Draper thing with an accent. I like it. I like it a lot. You also think about his, him being so articulate. When you think of Marty, you think articulate, you think exceptional. And most special about Marty, you think humble, and he has utterly no reason to be. He's an amazing guy. He's -- he has achieved so much in our school. He's become such a part of who we are, and he embodies what we love about Chapag. I'm so happy to have him represent us at graduate -- I really am. I'm getting choked up about you. I'm sorry. Marty is going to go to the honors program at Columbia University as a philosophy student and much, much more. Oh. You always got to do the scan. Congratulations.
That's right. Get my stuff out of the way. Okay, wait, some of it's mine.
Okay.
There was something that's mine here.
It's right there.
All right, and next is the CABES Student Leadership Awards recipients.
Yes. I just want to add one thing about Marty. He wrote a symphony for his senior project. I was there. I mean, it was college-level, professional. I just, I'm stunned. I'm stunned at his talent. Everybody's. I mean, it's just, this is such a fabulous class. We have the best kids in Region 12, but I'm telling you, he literally wrote a symphony. And then, behind the screen, I passed around Noelia's book. We had, I think, five, four or five students write books, and they're all back here, and they're amazing. They are literally amazing. I've started to email them, say, "How can I buy a book?" It's just, it really is. So it's really, it really is just wonderful. So, let's see if Darius Moreno is here. No. Okay. I am, I think in the future, we're going to have to remind the principals, to remind the kids, if they're available. Rachel Andrews? Yes. Come on. And Jim, we would like you to take a picture after, okay? Because it's CABES.
Okay.
CABES is Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And this award is given to students, again, who have a drive to success, leadership, they're responsible, and they have a passion to be involved in the community and to make the world a better place, as our board members do. So this award is given to two eighth graders and two Chapag students, I think in the 12th Rachel Andrews is currently an eighth grader at Chapag. She possesses outstanding maturity, a drive for success, and leadership qualities that not always are common among middle-school students. Her community-driven spirit, ability to manage three seasons of athletics, desire to challenge herself academically, as well as advocate for both her peers and herself, contribute to her exceptional character. Rachel is a remarkable, caring individual, often bringing balance to group dynamics athletically as well as in the classroom. We're very, very proud of you, my girlfriends, really. Fabulous. It's great. Wonderful. Good? Mom got it?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Congratulations. Okay, we have another Chapag senior, and this is kind of a no-brainer, I guess. Martin Meyer, come on up, is a senior at Chapag Valley School. His brilliant, not only is his success with his abundant, advanced academics, but also with his ability to remain humble while excelling in all facets of his high school career. Martin is genuine by nature and truly represents the voice of Chapag. Through his intellectual and charismatic delivery of daily announcements, outstanding participation, and leadership in student council, theatrical, musical, and debate events, as well as multiple other extracurricular activities, his diligence, eloquence, and devotion to our school community is unparalleled, and he truly deserves this award. Congratulations. After Martin's senior project presentation, I went to him and I said, "We need to take this on the road. You need to share this with the music teachers throughout the state." I'm not, that's how high-level it was. On classical, he researched classical music. It was unbelievable. And his poise and his delivery, it's unbelievable. It really is. And our next person, who is also a no-brainer, just love her to death, Madeline Gora, come on up. Maddie is currently a senior at Chapag. As a three-season athlete, member of the National Honor Society, an active participant in multiple clubs and organizations, as well as choral bands and theatrical productions, Madeline's outstanding commitment to both her school and local communities is exemplary. Her perseverance and grit have aided her with success with multiple facets over her high school career. Maddie possesses a humble, gracious, and engaging personality that contributes to her vibrancy as both a leader and a model student. Madeline consistently rises to any occasion and is truly a remarkable individual. And I've said this before, the day that Maddie had the St. Baldric activity, and she had her haircut, and her father had her haircut, and a lot of kids had their haircut, will, it's definitely one of my most memorable this school year, but will be one of my most memorable memories throughout my career as an educator. It was just that moving and that beautiful, and we should all look this gorgeous with this little hair, right? So congratulations, Maddie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did anyone come in late? Did anybody, I didn't see anybody. No. Okay, well, if they come, we can just at least take a picture. I think we're going to have some refreshments?
Yes.
Okay. Please help yourself to some refreshments, everyone, and we're going to take some pictures. If you'd like a family picture, we have a photographer, Colin, over there. He does a great job, and we can send it to you. He's right over there, Colin. And let's get some pictures. The principal, the --
All right, folks, I'd like to get our meeting back to order. For those of you who are here for awards and for treats, if you're smart, you'll leave. Unless you want to sit through our board meeting, which you're absolutely welcome If you really want to see how the sausage is made.
Before you bang again, I'm Pat.
Well, thank you all for that recognition of students. It's really one of the, if not the, the best meeting we have all year. We can see what we, what this region has produced and the wonderful students that we have here, so we're very fortunate. All right, and next item on our agenda, item five, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to address the board? All right, no one. I'm seeing no one, and I'll move on. Item six is the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes of our education committee meeting on May 15, 2017, and our special meeting on May 18, 2017. Anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, seeing no one, then the consent agenda's approved. Item seven, report of the chair. Just again, want to congratulate all the students who were recognized tonight. Really, a wonderful group of students, from primary school through to high school. The recognition of the top five academic seniors really is a, every year is a real treat, and the students that the school produces, and the administration produces, and the teachers, and their parents, it's just really tremendous, and we're all very proud, and we're all very fortunate to have them, and all of our students. I wanted to mention our sports teams, the end of the year, how well they're all doing. Yeah, all right. And our sports teams, including tennis, track, baseball, softball, all doing well, participating in Berkshire League playoffs. And I did want to make a special mention of Sean Parker, who was announced to be the Raymond Marinco Award winner. And as Matt Paracci announced to the board, this is a very prestigious award, the only league-wide award given by the Berkshire League to an individual, presented to Chapag senior Sean Parker at the June 1 Berkshire League All-Star banquet. Parker, a very decorated athlete, won state championships in cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track, set numerous school, league, and state records. Will be running for the University of Connecticut in the fall of 2017. So certainly, congratulations to Sean. And also from Matt, that the girls' four-by-800 relay team, track team, Noelia Aguirre, Lauren Bresson, Emma Krebs, and Alisa Effuni, set a new school record, nine minutes, 48 seconds at the CIA State Open. So congratulations to them. And congratulations to all our athletes and students who've really had a wonderful year. All right, that's all for me, and just generally -- And just generally, as the year wraps up and we head toward graduations and promotion ceremonies, I know that everybody and the staff is working very hard to finish the year, and so want to congratulate them for their work. All right, item eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Castino.
Thank you. I will start with some sad news. We did lose a student this weekend. He passed away. I do want to send our condolences to his family and his siblings. He has a brother and a sister at Chapag. It has been a very traumatic weekend for staff, and students, and the community. And we are sending our prayers and our good thoughts to the family, and we're here for them, and Mrs. Gallo is able to reach out to them if they need anything, so we will let you know. Before I ask Mrs. Gallo to say a few words, I do want to just thank Mrs. Gallo, Ms. Loughlin, the guidance counselors, Mrs. Ferrara, all of the staff who have gone above and beyond, and really have been here almost all weekend, making sure that they were here for kids, and families, and staff, and prepared for today. So again, we send our condolences to the family, and if you want to say just a couple of things, Kim?
There are very few things that we deal with that are more tragic than the loss of a child. And our students, in many ways, are children. However, I think it's very important for me to reassure the community and the board that we are trained in what to do, and what to do in the aftermath of a tragedy. What happens when something like this happens is we put together what we call a crisis team, and that's not a one-time thing. There are stages in this. The very initial things where you have to respond and understand what you say and what you don't say, so on and so forth. And then there are gathering kids, letting them know that there are safe places for them to vent their feelings, to examine them, to make sure that they're okay, so on and so forth. That has been the initial stages where we came together on Sunday, and then again, this morning, we started the day with a very early faculty meeting so that we would be ready when these students came in the door. We identified students that are of concern. Each of those students were dealt with in the way that was best for that individual student. We worked with families to make sure that everybody has an understanding of where we go. The board saw some letters that I sent to our homes, giving parents the words to say when words are difficult, and giving our teachers the words to say when students walk into a classroom, and giving them some research items that would help them to understand the grief process. In the upcoming weeks, the crisis team will continue to gather, not only to follow up on those students who we feel are at risk, but to make plans, to commemorate this event as students are already asking us to do, to identify how we can remember our friend and our student, to reach out to the family, to welcome his brother and his sister back to school in safety and in comfort, and to support each other. It is truly a very difficult time, but I want to tell you that there are many times that I know I'm very blessed to work at Chapag, and in tragedy, I know it absolutely well. We come together very well. We listen to each other, and we listen to the experts, and we will love our students through this, and you can be assured of that. And I'm happy to continue to explain that to you so that you can be assured that you're representing a school of quality and of character. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you for all your work this weekend, and for keeping the board informed.
Okay, I'm going to move on. I just want a couple of thank-yous, I just want to say. I just want to thank Debbie. You know, Debbie worked so hard to get the plaques, and the chairs, and all the awards together, so just thank you, Debbie, for putting it together for us. We appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you to Jen and ASAP for a fabulous evening Saturday night. The young writers' celebration is just like no other, and we had three students from Chapag who participated, and they were awesome. Oh, my gosh, they were awesome. And Michael Lombardi was the emcee, who is really wonderful. So we enjoyed ourselves. So thank you for that, and thank you for honoring our students. And I was told by Joanne, there were over 400 blind entries, and Chapag, from all over the state, and three of our kids got it out of 12, right? Or out of 10?
Four hundred submissions, and three from Region 12, but also... Four hundred submissions, three from Region 12.
Right.
And then two honorable mentions as well.
Right.
So we had 12 that were chosen, and then nine honorable mentions, and across the state.
Yeah. So that's amazing. That really is a tribute to our teachers, and our curriculum, and our instruction, and our kids.
And just on a side note, I just have to plug too. Emily Prezioso.
Yes.
Was also recognized for her book that she wrote for her senior project, because she was a young writer twice.
Twice, yes. Yeah, it was really, it was a lovely night. And then last night, I had the pleasure of going to the Judy Black Memorial Garden, which is the old Texaco Station, I found out, and we have our students' art on display. So it was really lovely to be there, and we have made a connection with them to do some Region 12 activities there. It's a beautiful space. It's a nonprofit. And Karen, today, hooked up with Katie is her name, and, you know, we're really going to try to use that a lot, for all three towns, but it's really a nice venue. So a lot of good things are going on. We do have a couple of, we have appointment of Lawrence Knapp for the front door, because Kimberly Knapp resigned. Claire Cavella is on a leave of absent. And Bob Geeson, is he here? Is retiring officially. Yes, I think, you know what? He does deserve a standing ovation. Good for you, Bob. Good for you. Because we're giving a standing ovation, Bob. Bob is retiring. We're hoping that he will remain for a time as a part-time employee for a while until we make further plans, and we'll see what happens. But I do want to say it, and I said it today at the finance meeting, we are in such great financial shape because of the work that Bob Geeson does, because of the connections he has, because of the phone calls he makes. He handles all of that negotiating with electric, and gas, and medical, and, you know, I think he just wears them down, and they say, "Just, Bob, just tell us what you want. Just tell what you want, we'll give it to you." But honestly, and he's always there for the kids. He loves the kids. If you ever see the kids come into the office, sometimes WPS kids come in, and they just automatically go to Bob. They just love Bob. So Bob, thank you for all you've done, and we hope to have you around for a little while longer.
Thank you to everybody. And doing this for 30 years, and great staff, everybody I've worked with, but the best part was tonight.
Yeah.
That's all about.
Kids. That's why we're here. And so, did you want to say?
I can tell. I'm like waving a little bit, but not fully. I just don't know what to do, because I wanted to speak about correspondence, but then you moved on to personnel.
Oh.
Is it too late?
No. Go ahead.
You sure, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, if we could talk about the email from the Kisslings that was sent to all of us, right? About the tuition?
Today? Yep. Oh, yes. Okay. I didn't send it out to everybody today.
I think everybody on the board got it.
Okay.
Right?
Came late today, and I was just going to do it for next week. But yeah, that's fine.
I just think if we could talk about it, and I don't know if we can talk about it under correspondence, if that's possible?
Sure.
Do I start, or do we?
Well, I...
We all do.
Okay. So basically, I'll start, and then you can, when I was at ASAP, I was approached by the Kisslings, who are a beautiful family from New Milford, and their daughter is here. She was an honorable mention, high achiever, you know, really doing great things at our school, part of breaking records, and just wonderful, wonderful family. And they were talking about how much they love Chapag, and how happy they are that kids are here. And they have a son who's in fifth grade, not here though, I don't think. Is he here? Right. But they want to bring him here, and they were talking about, you know, for the board to consider, and it's certainly not tonight because it's not on the agenda, but really looking at possibly lowering the tuition for the Chapag students also, because it is a hardship. And also that they feel that there are a lot more parents, at New Milford especially, who want to attend at least, you know, Chapag. They talked a lot about Chapag at this point, and that the cost is prohibitive.
Yeah. So can I just, and I don't know if we can talk about this at the next meeting and put it on the agenda, but just talking about the possibility, I know that we lowered the tuition for kindergarten through fifth grade, but wondering if we would consider possibly doing some sort of discount for the second child coming in, not changing the $7,500 for the first, for six through 12, but maybe giving some sort of, some sort of discount for the second, third child. Because I think that we, Alan did bring it up, and we talked about not changing the price, but I just think it's a discussion to have about the siblings, and I would welcome that being on the agenda for next time.
All right, we can do that. Will you put that on the agenda for next time?
It will, if people promise to speak about it in a condensed manner, because we have a full agenda, and we just don't want it to, I think people...
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
Fine.
Talk about it and have a vote.
Great.
Jim?
Yes.
Could I just ask for, in preparation for discussing it concisely next time, you know, when I brought this up last time in conjunction with the K5, I think a lot of the pushback, and a lot of the concern, had to do with, you know, now we're talking about 612 or 912 interfering with negotiations with Sherman. And I personally see that as two separate issues, and I know some people see that as the same issue, and if we could, if we could really get an insight into whether that has bearing or not, that might help our decision-making in the meeting. It's my feeling that the Sherman negotiations are a market value of an education between a school system and another school system, for a school system that has no high school of its own. And what we're talking about is something for tuition-paying parents. So I know, however, that Bob, who is, you know, the person who handles this negotiation, doesn't feel that way, so if he could either check or educate us as to his feelings on this, so that we can, we can make our conversation or decision wisely in the next meeting, as opposed to, you know, some of us thinking it's a conflict, and some of us not. That would be really great, if we could have the background, and maybe even discuss it with Sherman to see if it would involve, if it would change their feelings about things.
Bob, is that something that you think you could be prepared to do for our next meeting?
I'm not necessarily asking you to speak to Sherman. I'm not, I don't, I'm not... I don't think I would know that.
Okay. All right. But you'll be prepared to address the issue. All right, thank you.
Can I just ask, just ask a quick question? To, if we can have some idea of numbers that would be affected, I don't even know if we have that data. If we, we certainly have information on how many students we have from out of district, but I'm wondering, do we know if they have siblings? And are we talking about maybe offering a discount to two children? Or are we talking about potentially as many as 25 children? I mean, families, I should be saying? So that might have some bearing, too. I mean, financially, if we know as a board that we're only looking at offering this probably to just a few families, then that's a big difference, as opposed to quite a number potentially that would be taking advantage of that discount, so.
So you want some idea of how many multiple, non-resident, multiple-student families there are?
That would be ideal, if there's any way to do that.
Discussion is expanding?
I don't mind the discussion to expand tonight. I don't, I just don't want to, you know, I'm trying to keep us a little condensed, because we have a lot of executive session, and we tried to talk about not going till 11, 12 o'clock for executive session. And we got rid of that 19th meeting, June 19th meeting, because we said we could do everything in two. So that's my only concern. It's not on, I don't want to have the discussion.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah. Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Okay. Are we just asking, are we asking for a motion to have a reduced tuition for families that have multiple students? That's all we're talking about right now? Okay. Okay.
Yeah. We're not necessarily asking for a motion. We're asking for information, so if a motion is made, the board can decide it with all the information that it can get. All right.
Got it.
8.3, overview of 2017-18 plan for Burnham School. Kathy Colella.
Hi, good evening. I'll be quick. Primarily because you were given, most recently, a memorandum that I had written that had most of the information in it. I've added just a little bit more as we move forward. So as you all know, Burnham School has a strong and unique small-school culture. We're committed to creativity, differentiation, and rigorous expectations in a warm and joyful classrooms. Our program will be deeply rooted in curricular goals for each grade level, while personalizing and differentiating for each student. Our students will be coached to develop purposeful, productive social and learning behaviors, and a growth mindset. They will be challenged to strive in academics and shine as citizens of a unique and exciting learning community. So for my grades K1 and 2, we have finalized the teaching staff, and that's new. We will have Amy Stiles and Isabel Bray as the two team teachers, and our support staffer tutor is Michelle Segerson, who has been in there. Kristin De Souza will be on maternity leave most of the year. She'll be gone from September till May. As in her last maternity leave, she will continue to connect with the teachers and the students, primarily because she knows 50% of the students, so it's good to track that and get her support, since she's been doing the multi-grade. In grades 3, 4, and 5, again, we'll have two certified teachers and one tutor. The teachers are Jackie Collintine and Pam Lucchese, and the tutor is Amanda Farren. There's also, we also have a couple of paraprofessionals that'll float between the various grades. The curriculum, grade-specific standards will be taught to all grade levels, language arts, mathematics, science STEM, social studies, and our second step, social skills program, will all be grade-specific. Kindergarteners will maintain separate specials, because we plan to have our students take art, music, and PE together, but not kindergarten. So our kindergarteners will maintain separate specials, as in art, music, PE, due to their number and their developmental readiness. The specialist teachers felt it was best to do that. We'll have to assess it after this coming year and see if we make changes the following year. Grade 5 students will participate in typical grade-specific programs such as Dare, Second Step with our region's middle-school social worker, which is really important, yearbook creation, and Aloha, and any other activities that fifth graders generally have. Collaborative opportunities will be integrated throughout the day, morning meeting, art, music, Spanish, physical education, library, technology, themed projects based on common threads, and overarching essential questions that occur throughout the elementary curriculum. Teachers are trained in implementing such things as readers and writers workshop, and will provide strong differentiated instruction in each student's grade level, while students engage in a variety of partnerships focused on their own learning goals. So of course, if I, as I've talked in the past, there are benefits that I see, as well as my staff sees, with this new approach. We feel that children are able to... are able to spend several years with the same teachers and are provided with an opportunity to work with different adults with different, different strengths over the three-year cycle. Teachers can develop a deeper understanding of each child's strengths and needs, and then in a better, and they are in a better position to support their students' learning and to provide more individualized and effective instruction. And children have almost, and we've seen this, almost an extra month of teaching time because the teacher does not have to spend those very early weeks of the new school year getting to know each child and to review those routines. And we do find even, for instance, our kindergarteners, they quickly pick up the routines because they follow the first graders. So I suspect that'll happen with first and second. Those kindergarteners will follow them. Team teaching provides a more dynamic lesson presentation. Teachers and students will benefit, benefit from a variety of configurations, from whole group collaboration to single grade instruction and teacher-coached, project-based learning. So a wide variety of ways that we can approach that. And co-teaching, co-teachers share the workload of planning lessons and units for three different grade levels. Our model is built upon the success and the effectiveness of our K1 program already in place. Burnham already has a strong culture of collaboration across grade levels, and the K1, 2, and the 3, 4, 5 are in keeping with the existing culture. Burnham views its strong small school culture as an asset, and it remains as one of the gems of the community. The next steps that we are presently working on, we're working on schedules and trying to make sure that time for the teachers, that there is time almost every day for the teachers to plan together. So they'll be planning for some individual things as well as planning together. We're looking at the room arrangements and determining how students will move among the rooms. And so our K1 and 2 will use two rooms on the lower level. We hope to have a doorway through so that the children can flow easily from one room to another. We also plan to set up the rooms so that it's identical. So when students move from one room to another, they know where all the utensils are, they know where they need to sit. They're going to be color-coded and really child development-like. And in grades 3, 4, and 5, they'll be in the upper floor, and there are three rooms that they're going to use. One room will be their meeting room, where they'll do some collaborative work. They'll meet every morning in that room to do morning meeting, for example, together. And then they can move into two different rooms. One will be for math and sciences, and one will be for the humanities, language arts and social studies. So we're pretty excited about that. And we're still figuring out how that's going to look. We are making arrangements now to visit, to do some further visits and have some, some additional collaborative opportunities. The grade 3, 4, 5 teachers and I will be visiting Beechers School in Woodbridge in sometime this month, hopefully on Friday. They have a 1 through 4 multi-age configuration as well as traditional offerings. It's a very large school, so they offer student, parents' choices. So it'll be interesting to see how they do that. They have a teacher for every grade level, but then they do some collaborative things, grades 1 through 4. And then other visits will be forthcoming. We'll probably go back to Montessori and some of the other schools that we have visited before. We are looking at the grade level standards and planning how we'll implement instruction. And the school and town community collaboration will continue. We've started, I've started to work with them on a brochure for the town. It's looking really nice, and we're in the final stages of editing that. So as soon as that's ready, I'll make sure that you have an opportunity to see that. And lastly, the staff and I are excited about this challenge and want to showcase Burnham as an alternative to the traditional school setting. Region 12 can become the environment that offers options which may be a draw for future families in our district. We hope that the board embraces our work and helps us to recognize our uniqueness. We really think it's a great opportunity to give folks options. You know, if you want a more traditional setting, you can choose two of our other schools. And if you want something that's a little different, you can come to Burnham. So that's what we're hoping for. And we're pretty excited about it. The best part is, you know, when teachers choose to want to be a part of that, you know their heart and soul is there. And we have staff that has chosen to be a part of that. And that's, that's exciting, too. Any questions? Yes?
So I just want to start by thanking you. It's, it was a tall task that you were given, and you weren't given a lot of time to, to work on it. And so I just want you to know that it's appreciated by the board and by me specifically, that it took quite a bit of doing on your part. So thank you. Just, just two things to think about, not that you don't have your plate full of things to think about, but to add two more. One is that as principal of Booth 3, I know that booth numbers are also moving in the wrong direction as far as the board is concerned. And I know that you have an incoming kindergarten of six students, I believe, at Booth?
Yeah, five.
Five. So that's obviously of concern. I was wondering if you've thought about bringing in some of the booth teachers, particularly the K and first grade teachers into the training, any of the programs that you're doing, site visits that you're doing, because it may be that we, we might need to roll it out to more than just one school?
No, I certainly recognize that. I'm working really hard in getting Burnham in the right place. And once that's in the right place, we can begin to look at Booth also. My hope is that we'll have that expertise over at Burnham, which can, can be used. So yeah, we are monitoring Booth. I do think that the following year's kindergarten is much larger. So that is my, that is my hope.
Okay. And then speaking of numbers that do fluctuate, that would be my next question. Whether, if numbers do go up, and I know that even at Burnham, they've rebounded in certain grades, are we looking at whether we go back to a traditional model? Or is it, once a school goes with this new model, they're permanently, no matter, no matter how many students they have, they're permanently stuck with this new model, if you will?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know that I can answer that question right now. I'd like to see how it works and how we embrace it, and whether or not that is an option for us. I mean, it's always an option to think about, and it depends upon how large we get. So I'd like to get through our first year, and then perhaps maybe you can ask me that question again.
Well, I'm not, I'm certainly not speaking about the, the 3, 4, 5 merge. That, that's going to be brand new. I'm thinking more of K1, which you've been running K1 for how many years now?
I believe this is our third year.
Third year, yeah. And then K1, 2 for two years now?
No, this will be our first year.
First year for K1, 2.
Correct.
So a little bit more, some track data. And I know you had said that you wanted to have data, but I know that, you know, sometimes the decisions that we've made have been very, very fast. So I'd like to have a little bit of thought and planning to how this would roll out system-wide. Certainly in terms of equity of experience, I think that, that would be fair. But then also a process for evaluating, maybe on a grade-by-grade, school-by-school basis of whether this is something that we want to make permanent with no, no opportunity to ever change back, or whether as a community, we would have, if the numbers warrant it, an opportunity to move back to a traditional model.
Michelle?
I just want to thank you for all of the work you've done and the information. That was really great. And I saw in your newsletter that you had the, the teams of teachers there. That was really exciting. And I'm glad to hear that they're excited about that. And I guess to just sort of, not to really answer your question, Michael, but I would assume, anytime we've ever tried something new, we, we get sort of check-ins from, from the administrator and the teachers about how it's going. And, and if there are issues, obviously, then we'll have to rethink things. But so far, it seems like there's a, a good plan. My question for you was, are, do you feel, like, what's your, the hurdle that you have right now? Is there something that you need, or what's the challenge that you're working on at the moment?
Well, there's, there's a lot of work ahead of us. So getting our schedules in place so that we can start looking at planning. And my teachers will be working with Teresa DeBrito and myself to look at the standards, to make sure that we're covering the standards and how we're going to approach that. The planning's a little tricky. In the K through 2 programming, K1 and 2, there are some things that go very well together. Some of the social studies, so there's lots of big projects, you know, collaborative pieces that we could put together with some differentiation. In grades 3, 4, and 5, they're, they're not, they don't connect as well. So we really have to look at that and then really do some strong planning throughout the summer as to how we're going to approach that. But I feel like there's enough staff there to be able to do that. Mathematics in particular, science, some of the social studies, they are all different topics and don't always lend themselves to mesh together. So we'll be looking at pieces where we can do things together. And then, so the planning part is, is still huge, still on our plate and still huge.
Absolutely. And are most of the teachers who will be teaching available some, this summer?
They're excited about planning. They've started, I guess, once we get our schedule all set, because I have to be able to fit in a variety of different people within those schedules. So once I have that all set, then we can take a look at a master schedule throughout the day. So we, right now, have a rough schedule that we're looking at and trying to tweak and to look to see how we're fitting in those standards throughout the day.
Last question, if that's all right. So this, the summer work, is this more, I'm assuming this is more than you would normally do in the summer. And, and have we set aside enough money to, to do the summer work? Or we'll have to find it, but obviously. Do we have that?
Great.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else for Kathy? Alan?
I just want to point out for the record, and there's no press here now, but maybe this will be watched by the millions who watch this on YouTube. There was a great article, yeah, fans of the board meetings, the great article, I don't know, last week or over the weekend on the News Times about the new formation at, at Burnham, which really pointed to this is, you know, when, when given the lemons of a declining population, we have the delicious lemonade of a whole new revolutionary school system. But it had a horrible headline.
It did.
So for the record-
And I was really upset about this.
Let's do some counting, shall we? You mentioned two classes, classrooms for the K2, and three classrooms for the 3, 5. That's five. We also have a library and a computer room and an art room, right?
Right.
So that's eight. Plus, we still have a gym, which technically counts as a room. So that's a nine-room class, a schoolhouse at least. So let everyone know that even though that was the biggest font I've seen short of some kind of national disaster in the Denver Bay News Times, it is not a two-room schoolhouse, right?
And I purposely, can I just interject? I purposely have changed it to say I have a K1, 2, because we are doing individual standards.
Right.
And I have a 3, 4, 5. So when I spoke to the reporter, he brought up the two-room schoolhouse that he has heard. And I said, please do not use that term. I'm asking people not to use it. He promised he would not use it. Calls me the next day and he said, oh, I'm really sorry. I just want you to know that I used it. If you want to talk to me about it. And it was the headline.
Ooh.
So, yeah.
All right. Anything else for Kathy?
It's not a two-room schoolhouse.
I'm not returning his calls anymore.
No, it's not a two-room schoolhouse.
All right, Kathy, thank, oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Oh, my live. Okay. Sorry, first time I've used this. So just coming sort of from a community perspective on this, I think it's looking really great. And I just want to say, looking forward, it's really, really hard to say something looks really great. And then in a year, the numbers change, and we go, oh, we're going to go back to what we used to do. And I know if it doesn't go well, it doesn't go well. But change is so hard, probably less for the students than it is for the adults and for the community. But if we can resist changing the model again every year, it would really be great despite the numbers unless they drastically change or it drastically goes wrong. Of course, the first year, it's not going to be perfect. But I just think if we could do something consistent and get one brochure and try to build our town back up and its school-
I love that brochure.
That would be great. Yeah, it looks terrific.
No, I, I agree with you. I'm not, I can't, can't keep going from one extreme to another. And I really think that this is a powerful model. And I do think with our smallness, and I don't think we'll ever be enormous, that it's a great opportunity to just have an alternative.
Great, thanks.
All right. Anyone else for Kathy? Kathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks for all your hard work.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
I just want to let the board know that Doug Clements will be at the next meeting making a presentation per chairman's request.
All right. Next item, noncommittee reports. Building. Greg, any report?
The Building Committee, what they need- The Building Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. And we will be considering, among other things, the information that we have received from ONG concerning the latest pricing out of the schematic design of the school. So we're, we're going to take a look at that, and we'll have details for you after that meeting.
All right. Education curriculum, Michelle or Michael, anything?
Just at our next meeting, which is, what, the fifth?
Next Monday.
Next, next Monday. And that'll be sort of our end-of-the-year, state-of-the-schools presentation from our administrators. And that's it for the education part of the agenda, I believe.
For this year. All right, thank you. At advance, Michelle, anything?
Um, no.
All right. Facilities, Greg?
Uh, yes. The Facilities Committee has, we, we haven't met since last month, so we'll, I don't really have anything to update you on, other than to say that we're looking carefully at, at what our priorities need to be going forward on this school regardless of AgSTEM, because there are things that have comatted the AgSTEM project and need attention. So we're, we're looking into those and trying to get a good long-term plan together. So that's what Facilities is concentrating on as of late.
All right, thank you. If anybody has any questions for any of the chairman as we go along, please just let me know. Finance, Valerie is not here. Bob, is there anything you can report on the Finance Committee?
Uh, yeah. Tonight, we discussed with finance person Barry from the Financial Advisor, a structure for what we know at this point is the estimated cost for these projects. And the objective was to level fund it. In other words, keep the, the payments over time. And we have a model, and it's just a discussion model, but it looks pretty, at this point, pretty decent as to what's going on. And the other thing was that we discussed a, I kind of go back to what was said. I kind of beat up Kerma and got a reduction in our insurance for property liability. Insurance is about 10% and a cap on the next two years at 3%. So those two, two things worked out well. And we kind of left the other things until the next meeting.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that work. Any questions for Bob? Anthony?
Bob, just confirming, in your pro forma on the debt service schedule, you made no assumptions about the, the, was it D-Bol grant?
Nope.
Right?
Nothing's in there.
No, we didn't take any of that into consideration whatsoever, because that's not a part of it at all.
That's what I thought, but I just-
Right. And it, and it did kind of level itself off. We have one year with a spike in it. But if you are familiar at all with issuing municipal bonds, for example, there's a premium that's usually paid when you do that, and it should mitigate that increased $91,000 in the one year. All the rest of the years, the slowly declines, but that was the objective going in. And it's not the final answer. The final answer is only going to come when the final costs are known.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Long-range planning, Alan?
We didn't meet in our last scheduled meeting because we didn't have a quorum. But I'm going to take this opportunity to let you all know, even though everybody's gone except for the board, that two hours ago, the boys four by 400 broke the school record at the... Yeah, well, that was, the girls was four by 800 and the boys was four by 400. Last week was Berkshire S. and then it was State Open this afternoon and tonight at...
With the kids, do you know?
It was, huh, I know this because it's in touch with my wife who's there. My son Cameron and Sean Welsh and Chandler Weatherby and Gavin, whose last name I never remember. Does anybody know Gavin McCabe? Yes, it is, thank you. Gavin McCabe, yeah.
Congratulations.
Very good, thank you, Alan. Negotiations, Greg?
We have commenced negotiations with the union representing the nurses. And we've had our first meeting. We expect to, we hope to conclude those negotiations before the contract expires on June 30th.
Okay. Thank you. Policies and bylaws, Michelle?
We met last month and we have two new policies on the agenda for today.
Okay. So let's get to it. Item 10, old business, second reading policy 5145.25, directory information. Michelle?
All right. This policy, if you pull it up, these are all in our packets. Give me a second as I scroll through. Was brought to the board, unfortunately, I was not here, the original discussion. If you look at the bottom of the policy, it was, let's see. First reading was in March, it was brought back to the committee. And so here we are for a second reading. There was a question regarding what information had to be provided and whether the date of birth had to be provided. And what we as a committee asked, we asked Teresa to ask whomever often gives this information, how important date of birth was and how it is, it is used. They gave me some examples of times it has been requested for Yukon Summer Program, Camp Mohawk, Camp Oceanography, Boys State, Center for Creative Work, Bucks Rock. So, so camps where they're, they're putting students, they, they need to know that their age, that they're the appropriate age for these groups. And they also noted that the parent in these requests has already signed off on this information. So they're, they're getting information from the school regarding the, not just, obviously, their, their date of birth, but their standing as a student. And, and the parent has asked for this information to be sent. So it was our recommendation to leave that in the directory information that is provided. I don't think there is any other discussion.
All right. Is there a motion to approve 5145.25?
I have some discussion.
Is there a motion to approve? All right, Michael moves, is there a second? I'm sorry, Jen seconds, all right. Greg?
Michelle, I, I don't understand what you've said about that because what this says is, it, it, it says that they can, institutions of higher learning, military recruiters shall have access to the students' names, addresses, and telephone listings unless a student or the parent request that that remain private. But it then defines directory information and includes the birth, date and place of birth. And it goes on to say, the district may disclose any of the following items listed as directory information without prior written consent unless notified in writing to the contrary. And I think what this policy means is, is that there's automatic disclosure unless a parent opts out. And I think that begs the question on the issue of this information. I do not think it should be opt out, it should be opt in. You want, you want to know their name, address, and telephone listing, that's fine. But you want to know anything more, you need to opt in. And I, I really disagree with this policy and I intend to vote against it again.
All right, anything else? Alan?
Without dragging this out too much, I think, having checked with the administration, it's a logistical nightmare to have it, this be an opt in. Managing to hunt everyone down and making sure it was all in place. And I think that's why it's set up this way. And obviously, we can argue about whether, you know, whose convenience is at stake here. But it also, you know, complies with statute to have it in this manner for higher institutions and military.
Anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the floor then to approve policy 5145.15, directory information. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Greg? Any abstain? All right, the motion passes. Next. 10.2, second reading policy 9126, bylaws of the board treasurer, Michelle?
All right, there are two versions in the packet that was sent. If you open the one that has the yellow highlightings, you'll see what was changed. This was...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Just before we get beyond this, could you just make sure that the record shows that in the agenda, the last one we just voted on is shown as 5145.25, but it should be 5145.15 in the agenda and the minutes?
Thank you, I didn't even notice that. No, that's important, thank you. I didn't even notice.
It is, yes, it is 0.15 on the policy itself. Thank you for that, Alan. Michelle?
All right, so the next, the next policy is about the treasurer. And you all saw this before, the yellow is the new language. It explains how the treasurer reviews and countersigns the vouchers for checks over 5,000. We spoke about this in committee and we checked with Bob and with Valerie just to make sure that this really reflects what has been happening. And in this case, vouchers are not the, it's not at the time the check is written, but the treasurer periodically reviews all of the, the paperwork that went with the check to, for everything that was over 5,000. And so voucher is the word that, that is used for that. I think that's it.
So the, is the version that's being proposed, the yellow highlighted version?
Well, actually, I believe that the second one is the, is the cleaned up version.
I see, okay.
So I just, so, so it's, it's given to you as it will look, the cleaned up version, but the yellow shows you what the changes were.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve policy 9126 as, for second reading?
Yes, so moved.
Second? Jen seconds, all right, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving policy 9126, bylaws of the board treasurer for a second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. All right, item 11, new business, first reading policy 4111 slash 4211, recruitment and selection. Michelle? Are you prepared to speak to this?
Wait a second, there's nothing. I don't remember, this isn't new, is it? Yeah, I have, I have it right here. I remember talking about this in committee, but, oh, wait, okay, that's right because it's so different. So if you look in your packet, the first one is very, very, very short. It's like a paragraph long.
That's 4111.
Yeah, recruitment and selection. And then the second one that, that was sent is Cave's updated version. And there was just so much that has, has changed. The inclusion of the teacher retirement's system. It's, it's to bring it into compliance with all of the updated laws. So I, I don't believe it is, as we reviewed it, it's not really a change in anything that we're doing. It's just making sure that all of the laws that we have to comply with are, are spelled out.
Greg?
Has this been run by our council? Because we just negotiated a teacher contract. And I think it, I think it should be referred to our council before we take any action on it.
All right. It was not referred to our, our council. Right.
I just wanted to remind everyone that all of these policies go through the Cave Council, so...
I guess, before I would send anything to council, just based on our experiences, I guess, if I were to send it, I would want to send it only to ask, is it in contradiction to anything in the contract? And I, without we're doctoring the entire thing. Is that, would that be sufficient, Greg? Or, or do enough people feel that, that we should do that? I mean, this is about the recruiting and selecting. So I, I'm not really sure, once they're on contract, this, this, I don't know. I, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that I see the necessity. But I guess if we kept the, the question very limited to, is there a conflict with our current contract? I could see that. I don't know. Anyone else?
Greg?
Yeah, anytime we have a labor contract, I become very concerned because there are topics in labor contracts, there are things that are subjects for bargaining, things that aren't. And although Cave's council may have reviewed this and although they may be familiar with general notions of how contracts have gone in the state, they are not familiar with our contract. And the one thing I'll tell you about labor contracts is things get put in there for a variety of reasons over the years and, and they don't fall out anywhere near as easily as they fall in. And so I would just want to make sure that there's nothing in here that's inconsistent with the contract we have. And, and we want to make sure that we don't have any issues or problems that this creates in, concerning that contract. I don't need, you know, our council to wordsmith the document or suggest something better. But you understand that that's kind of like, you know, putting a steak on the counter and asking your dog to, you know, be good, good boy or good girl and not go near it as you leave the room. Lawyers can't resist that stuff because if he sees something in there that's poorly drafted, poorly stated, or would be better for the district for a variety of reasons, I would hope that he would not feel constrained to point that out to us. But we can ask that he not, you know, take this thing and fly speck it. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for compliance with our contract. It's the same thing we did the last time we had an issue that came up related to this, although I think that got a few more suggested revisions.
I guess, the, the last time we sent him something, though, it was because it actually applied to the contract. This is actually recruitment and selection. So this is all talking about our compliance with state and federal laws in, in recruiting and hiring. Once they're hired, the, the contract is in effect. I, I don't see anything in this policy that actually addresses something about once they're hired. The retired teacher part is, is talking about our hiring of a retired teacher and, and how that works with the state, the teacher retirement system. And, and because there are rules about how much they can and cannot work, and that's state law. So if our lawyer allowed us to have an employment contract that is counter to state law, then I think that's the problem.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, it does, it does have things in here about retired teachers, again, I...
About hiring them.
About hiring them, exactly. But you're talking about hiring people who are a member of a union to a job. And the question is, is that a union job? I believe it is. There's a whole raft of issues that, that come up in this thing. And I would just like another set of eyes on it. It's what I'm suggesting. I mean, the board can do what it wants. But I would never want to do anything that affected a contract I had without having it reviewed by the lawyer who negotiated the contract and who's familiar with all of our contracts to make sure it's in compliance with it. It's not a long review, it won't take them days and days to do it, and it won't be that expensive. But stepping into a problem, drawing a grievance, creating a labor issue is not smart either. And you end up spending many times more on anything like that than you ever spend on a quick review.
Alan?
Is there any kind of, since we have two attorneys here, any kind of choke chain we can put on this Doberman so that he'll just sniff the steak and not start chewing on it? I mean, what is that? Tell him to only pay him for 15 minutes of his time or something? How, how do we work that?
We give a clear assignment that we would like him to review this for, to make sure that it is not, it does not fail to, that, there are no inconsistencies between this and the labor contracts that we have with, with the teachers. And, you know, the, I mean, the other thing I would love for him to do is just make, I mean, he knows this stuff, he'll know what's in here, he'll know what the law is. If, God forbid, someone has made a typo or, or misstated something, as does sometimes happen in these pre-printed things that get sent out. And, you know, somebody's reviewed it three times and they miss the same mistake. I would certainly like him to call that to our attention. But I think if you just ask him to review this for conformity with our contracts, to make sure there's no inconsistencies. That's how you do it. I, I wouldn't give him 15 minutes because it might take him longer than that to read the thing.
Alan, I'm sorry, Anthony?
Thanks. I got to agree with Greg and Alan. And I, I just think it's, it's prudent to have a lawyer give it, give it a read. I also think to have it clearly bound with, this is what we need or want versus something else you might have in mind, I think would also be good for him too.
Yeah.
As well as us. But I would, I would ask, not to, to solve it here, but, you know, sometimes you have a caveat or, or language that would, you know, set out a statement at the bottom and maybe that's, in the end, something we can get out of Gary that we could reuse over and over again. That clearly states that any contradiction between policy and contract, contract takes precedence and, you know, and setting up that, that as, as a, is also a belts and suspenders move, Greg, that even though Gary would, would read it and say, I don't see anything, it doesn't stop somebody from trying to make an argument or stretch. And, and I think language like that may just be, just good, you know, to have in any policy that references or potentially references another agreement.
I wonder if, if, I know that we have nursing negotiation on Thursday and Gary will be at that negotiation. If we could send it to him. I wonder if it makes sense to approve this for a first reading, send it to him, subject to his approval. We could actually have this on the agenda next week, is that? For approval at a second reading if he has given it his okay.
Jim, would you like me to send it to him as chair of labor negotiations? Or do you want to send it as chair of the board? Doesn't matter to me.
I, I would ask Michelle to send it, but you, you can send it, that's fine. Just copy Michelle if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? To approve for a first reading? Is there a second? All right, second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving policy 4111, 4211, personnel certified slash non-certified recruitment and selection, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's approved for a first reading and we'll send it to council and hopefully we can get his opinion on Thursday and we'll put it on the next agenda for a second reading. All right, next. Policy 5118.1, homeless students, Michelle?
Yes, so if you look at the version you were sent, you'll see the yellow highlights. That is the new language. This is new language that was mandated by changes in, I think it was the federal, the, the ESA laws, yeah. So most of it's pretty standard language change. One thing that, that we sort of talked about in committee that was interesting, because we are, just, I guess, to back up, we are required to educate students who become homeless. And if we were the home district, it's our responsibility, even though technically they may not live, you know, their living situation may be in flux. If you look at number four, if, if the student is staying somewhere else, it says the school of origin, if the school of origin is in a different school district from where the homeless child or youth is currently living, both school districts shall agree on a method for sharing the responsibility and costs or share the costs equally. This is regarding transportation. Still our job to educate them because they're our home, they, they lived here when, then, when they started. But the transportation of that student then becomes a sharing between where they're currently living and the home... they're currently living and the home district. It is not something that we thankfully see very often, but this is state and federal law, so we need to update our policy to reflect the changes in that law.
Is there a motion? A motion to approve 5118.1, homeless students for a first reading. Jen moves. Is there a second? Michael, seconds. I just want to say, I should have stated at the beginning of this discussion, for Julie and for Mr. Boniudo, who's present, I know you're probably familiar with the process, but policy of the board, the board approves policy for a first reading, but it doesn't become actual policy of the board until after the approval at a second reading. So we've approved some policies tonight as second readings, so they are policies of the board. Now we're approving policies for a first reading, so they'll come back up for a second reading. All right, so there's been a motion to approve 5118.1, homeless students for a first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's passed unanimously. Thank you. Michelle, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
11.3, healthy school nutrition program, to consider and if appropriate, approve addendum to agreement for child nutrition, nutrition programs, ED 099, to not participate under the Connecticut nutrition standards as published by the Connecticut Department of Education for school year 2018-2019. Mr. Geeson?
Yeah, every year we have to recertify to the State Department of Education, child attrition, our desire to either participate or not participate in the program. Last year, for the first time, we decided to try the participation in the program. However, the regulations have become so onerous now, and they continue to pile on, and it's very difficult for us to comply because we're so small. We're seeing a drop off in the student participation and a drop off as a result of some of the revenue. It's my recommendation that we go back to what we've been doing. We still comply with the nutrition standards, we're just not under this program. In the, by getting out from underneath that program, we don't have as much restrictions put on us, and the kids are better served. That's the bottom line. The kids would be better served under the program we had in place versus what we tried and just didn't work after eight months.
All right. Any, is there a motion to not participate under the Connecticut nutrition standards?
Yeah, I'll move not to participate.
All right, moved and seconded by Anthony, seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously. I'd like to add one, item 11.4 for new business. I have a letter addressed to me dated May, and we don't have to consider this tonight, but perhaps the board will. This is a letter addressed to me dated May 10, 2017, from Lynn A. Werner, Executive Director of the Housatonic Valley Association in Cornwall Bridge. Dear Mr. Hirschfield, for more than 20 years, the Housatonic Valley Association has held its annual auction in the town of Washington. This gala is, gala is our major fundraising event, the proceeds from which enable us to carry out our mission of conserving the natural character and environmental health within the communities of the Housatonic River watershed. Last year, we held our event at the Washington Primary School Gymnasium, and with the board's approval, we served alcohol to our guests without incident. HVA wishes to once again use the Washington Primary School Gymnasium for our 27th Annual Auction to benefit the environment on Sunday, November 5, 2017. We have begun making application for use of the facility and will abide by facility rules and regulations. We anticipate that 225 people will attend the event. We respectfully request that HVA be granted permission to provide alcoholic beverages during the event under the terms of a state of Connecticut temporary liquor permit. Beverages are served by our licensed caterer, who restricts serving of alcohol to those persons aged 21 and over, and require photo identification of anyone who appears under the age of 30. We have never had an incident related to alcohol abuse in more than two decades of hosting this auction. Thank you for your, thank you for considering our request. Please contact me if you would like further information. Sincerely yours, Lynn A. Werner, Executive Director. Alan?
I'd like to move to add Lynn Werner's letter to the board from HVA to our agenda, item 11.4, to consider and if appropriate, approve her request.
All right, so, all right, so moved and seconded to add the item to the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's added to the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Lynn Werner's request as put forth in letter to James Hirschfield from HVA requesting the use of WPS in November 2017.
November 5, 2017.
November 5, 2017, which is a.
Sunday.
Sun.
Sunday, it says Sunday, November 5.
Okay.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Anything further, Greg?
Yes, would you just accept a friendly amendment that it's subject to the usual stipulations and insurance requirements?
All right. Pat?
Yes, we received the letter, and we also received a phone call last week saying that they, that date was not good for them anymore. So we were waiting to hear. That's why we didn't have it on the agenda. But certainly, you can vote with the pending date, but they, November 5 is not good. But, but I have no problem with you voting, and then I could tell you when the date is because we're working with them.
Doesn't that get dangerous if it's suddenly, the date is, we've approved it, but the date turns out to be a date for the middle school play or something like that, or?
We wouldn't give them a date that's.
Okay, so in other words, this is just freeing you up to.
They just can't make it that day.
Okay.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm a little bit, let's see, with approving something in blank where we don't know of a date. They were talking about the service of alcohol at the building, and I think I'd want to know all the details before I made that decision. I just think it's good policy to make decisions that way.
All right. I'm sorry, I didn't realize from the superintendent that the date had changed before I read this letter. So what's the board's? You want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Fine.
We'll bring it next week. Hopefully, they'll have another date. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, is there any action items? None? Item 13, executive session, is there a motion to go into accession, executive session to review non-certified staff 2017-18 salaries, a central office personnel matter, and superintendent's end of year evaluation? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, we're in executive session at 8:31. We're going to go into this side room so that the young man can clean up.
Yeah. Thank you.
If we need five minutes, we can do that.